Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the September 17th Regular Meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening, on this very nice evening, and ask that if you're able to please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Present.
Councilmember Sonyard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Naxton?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Councilmember Dotha is absent. Councilmember Cessna?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda and request unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody on the body that would like to amend the Agenda or Consent Agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the Consent Agenda into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval of the Minutes from the Regular Meeting of September 3rd, 2025, brought to you by the City Clerk. Action and Approval, Bills to be Ratified, brought to you by the Administration. Action and Approval of Purchase Orders and Purchase Order Amendments, requiring Council Approval in accordance with KMC 7.15.020, brought to you by Administration. Action and Approval of Confirming the Appointment of the Election Precinct Boards for the October 7th, 2025 Regular City Election, brought to you by the City Clerk, and that is your Consent Agenda.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on any item that is on the Consent Agenda, which was just read into the record? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda is approved. This evening, we have no scheduled administrative reports. Under Item C, Schedule Public Comment, we do have an item here, that's probably why several of you are in the room right now, with the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby Grand Prize Awards. The Executive Director of the Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, Ms. Samantha Springer. Sam.
I'm tired. Hi. That was a crazy derby. It was amazing, but it was crazy. I will get a day off in December. I'm really excited. So, some fun facts before we give away the giant, heavy checks. In 2025, we had 176 adult participants and 12 youth participants. 153 of them were from Alaska. 51 tickets were for all six days. 70 tickets were for more than two days. 302 fish were weighed in, which compared to last year's 72 fish over six days, kind of a big deal. It was pretty crazy. And the combined total weight of all the fish was 2,486 pounds. So, I thought that was pretty cool. The biggest fish was 13.42, and the smallest was 4.20, and there was no Alaska Airlines 4.90 fish, but there was, it made me so sad for him, 4.92. Oh, I know. I know. I felt that one for that person, myself. And actually, the other 4.9 fish is in the room, too. One of the Craig girls got that. So, yeah. So, the magic final weight was 6.77 pounds. So, the adult winner is Tommy McMurray, who's here, and Lily Craig. So, we're gonna, we have big checks, and we have Marathon, and we have Mayor Gabriel, so, and we have a photographer, multiple, so if we want to do that.
Yeah, so just real quick, I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations to the winner. Some other people probably want to comment here as well, but, you know, thanks to Sam and the work she did over the, and the staff over at the chamber, to the sponsors, to Marathon. This is the ninth annual Derby, which it seems it hasn't been, Ms. Ostrander's in the back of the room, he was here for the very first, Daniel. And the whole idea behind the, and I always like to kind of, you know, highlight this for the magic weight, is that we don't do the big, biggest fish because silvers are susceptible to catch and release mortality. And so, in order to, you know, make it fair, you know, we do this once a weight spin, once a day, call it the magic weight, and a very, I think, sustainable way to run a silver Derby. So, thanks for all the participants and the sponsors, and obviously, congratulations to the winners. So, anybody else want to comment here? Guess not. Okay. So with that, let's, I guess we're gonna do a photo op here. All right. Congratulations again. You gonna share that with your sisters?
Yes.
Are you? Good for you. Awesome. Good to hear.
I'll take one.
Is that for the, is that for the daily winners?
Yes.
The daily winner checks. Okay. Next up, we have, this evening, we have no unscheduled public comment. Next up, under Item E1, Public Hearings, we have Ordinance Number 3485-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the State of Alaska for the Purchase of Library Materials. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3485-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3485-2025? Oh, no. Sorry, sorry. Skip. Let's back up a little bit to Item D. Marion, yeah, I'm sorry, Marion. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to the council at this time on any item that is not on the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Ms. Nelson?
Marion Nelson, Kenai Arts Center. Just a real quick thing, this week is the, coming up next week is the annual art auction that has both, my mind just went blank. Who am I? What am I doing here? Silent auction as well as outcry auction. I don't know who they ended up with the auctioneer this year, because the person that we've had for a number of years likes to play the waiting game, and he does not consent or give in, whatever you want to call it, till the very last minute. So, it keeps everybody on tenterhooks for a while. Anyway, there's quite a few items, of course, for the outcry auction, and you can bid on that now and see what happens when the auction starts. It's always kind of exciting, as well as, of course, buy what you want to buy. And the Potter's Guild and the people in the Arts Center in general participate in this, so it's lots of different kinds of art, and it's a great fundraiser for the Arts Center in general, and it's always a fun evening, well catered, has a great caterer every year, so hop up and get your ticket. And the Potter's Guild is, I have to admit, they're my favorite, the two, the artists in general, and then the Potter's Guild. They just keep cranking away, firing, generally speaking, about once a month. I can't tell you exactly how long it takes to do a firing, but we close the, just as general information, we close the Arts Center in general when the kiln, the larger gas kiln, is firing, because there's a certain amount of heat, and I won't call it fumes, you might call it fumes, it's not. You don't smell some weird smell. It's just that you know there's a little extra heat in the building when that thing is firing. It takes roughly a day and a half, and then it's over with. And we do not have, the public doesn't, is not in the building when the gas kiln is firing. There's the gas kiln, which is a big kiln, and then there's several electric kilns, just an FYI. That's about all I have to say for this time. Any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Nelson? Thank you, Marion. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to council on, this time, on any item that is not on the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Anybody online? Nobody online? Nobody in chambers? With that, we'll close unscheduled public comments and move to public hearings under Item E1, Ordinance Number 3585-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the State of Alaska for the Purchase of Libraries, Library Materials. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3485-2025.
I'll second again.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3485-2025? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we're gonna bring it back to council and maybe just get a quick overview. Here, I see Ms. Wolf, our library director is here. I defer to Ms. Wolf.
Of course, thank you. So, this is an annual grant, and see Public Library Assistance Grant, and we are planning on just adding that to our materials budget, so it'll be just integrated into that, and we'll be purchasing materials throughout the rest of the year with this money. And this is a grant that has been around for decades now. We receive it, we've received it for a couple decades.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you do there. Any questions, comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Cessna?
Thank you. I just wanted to come in, coach on our team, for, once again, sourcing and securing additional funds for the library. I know there's hurdles you have to jump through to make that happen every year, so we appreciate it.
Any further comments, deliberation? Oh, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the same, and it's always good to get some grants from the state. They're still coming, and you're still acquiring them, and I know the library works very hard down there. You have quite a program, and this will be well utilized. So, thanks for all you do.
Councilwoman Sonard?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just echoing the same sentiments, just congratulations to you and your team, and keeping up with the paperwork that goes along with having to put in for these grants and to keep up with them. It's not an easy process, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonyard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxton?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cessna?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance Number 3485-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have Item E2, Ordinance Number 3486-2025, accepting, and before we get to this, I just, I just wanted to point out that this is, this is a time-sensitive ordinance. Normally, this would be brought up as introduction at the meeting before we had the public hearing. This is, there's a, it's time-sensitive, and pursuant to KMC 1.15.070D, an ordinance making or changing appropriations may be read and passed the same day by unanimous consent. So, this is one of those times that we will do this. So, the way this works is we'll have to have a motion for introduction, a motion for a second reading, and then a motion for enactment. When we get to the motion for enactment, that would open up the public comment at that time. So, nobody's, we're still gonna hit that portion as well. So, we have Ordinance Number 3486-25, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant Received and Foundation for the Kenai Bronze Bear Family Sculpture Project. I'd like to entertain a motion for introduction, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce Ordinance 3486-2025 and request unanimous consent.
I'll second it.
Discussion on the motion? Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion is approved. That brings us to the second part, which is the entertaining a motion for a second reading, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of Ordinance 3486-2025 and request unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we've reached the unanimous vote threshold for a second reading. So with that, we have Ordinance Number 3486-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant Received and Foundation for the Kenai Bronze Bear Family Sculpture Project. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3486-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3486-2025? Sorry, do you mind, Mary? And then just state your, state where you live for the record, your name and where you live for the record, please.
Sorry. Mary Bondurant, Saldana, Alaska. Mayor Gabriel, members of council, I just wanted to give you a little recap on our project. It's been quite a while, October of '23. Commission and council gave support in the fall of 2023, and we moved forward, partnering with the community members in forming a nonprofit to raise approximately $200,000 for the Bronze Bear Sculpture Garden. In February of 2024, financial fundraising jumped, got a huge jump with $30,000 sponsorships each from Grand Aviation and Three Bears. They're the very first to step forward and support this vision of bringing the bears to Kenai. Since then, we have received financial and in-kind support from Marathon, Alaska Airlines Services, HDL Engineering, Linden Transport, Rick and Bobby Baldwin, Dr. Pete and Carol Lee Hansen, Marty and Victoria Askin, and the Kenai Community Foundation recently, and most recently, the Rasmussen Foundation. We have a contract in place with artists for the two cub bears, which are now in the final stages of being bronze. This week, with the Rasmussen Grant, we will be entering a contract for the mama bear. We're so grateful to everyone who's been part of this story. We're still on a final fundraising effort for the donor recognition board, the signage, and lighting over the next month. Don't forget that donations starting at $100 will get your name on the recognition display in the terminal. Currently, the bears are scheduled for transport from Utah to Kenai in mid-October with an unveiling at the airport the end of October. We're very excited to share this with the community, not just as art, but as a symbol of what's possible when the community of the Kenai Peninsula comes together. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions of Ms. Bondurant? Vice Mayor Naxton?
Thank you. Not so much a question, but I'd just like to say that Mary Bondurant and Christine Cunningham are rock stars in all of this. It was their idea, pushing it forward, and got the group together. And actually, when I first heard that we were at Ground Zero, didn't have any money, and we're looking for $200,000 from our small community, I really didn't know how you get from there to where you are right now. But the two of you, working in tandem together, have been able to achieve that, for Joe on the radio, advertising, you've been here at council and other venues and whatnot, and making it happen. And I think the airport commission also is very excited about it, you know, kind of filling that spot down there on the, in the new landscaping area. And I'm proud of both of you. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments? Yeah, I guess I would echo the vice mayor here and say that, you know, that seemed like a heavy lift, but you guys just have knocked it out of the park, and I know it's something you've worked tirelessly at. And I was actually at that meeting with, with the Rasmussen folks. We met in the Kenai Airport, and it was just very neat the way you see you guys handle the request, and obviously, made enough of an impression to, for them to come through with a $25,000 donation. So, and for folks that don't know, there's the mini sculptures that are still at the chamber, is that correct? Where if you want to get sort of a preview of what this, this is gonna look like, which is, you know, very fantastic sculpture, I think this is the type of thing when people land in Kenai, especially young people, because that first impression is gonna be, you know, kind of hit them, that everybody always remembers those moments in time where they see things that really stick out for the rest of their life. I think this will be one of those, those events that we have. So, thank you for all the work you've done.
You're welcome. And I have one, just one last comment. We will be putting up an eight-foot fence around that section of the air, at the north end of the airport, so you're not gonna be able to see what's happening behind the scenes. And there'll be a big banner that you can see from the street that's coming soon with all the logos of everyone that's contributed to the project. So, you know, set your calendar for the end of October unveiling.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. And again, yes, thank you to the sponsors, obviously, that have moved this ahead so quickly. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3486-2025? Ms. Ostrander?
Paul Ostrander, 48645 Runners Avenue, K Beach. Can't bring myself to say Saldana, sorry. It's just kind of weird being on this side of things. But before I start here, I just wanted to say two things. One, I didn't realize this was gonna be on the council meeting until Terry texted me when I was in Sea-Tac today, halfway back from California. Wasn't planning on coming here and talking to council, haven't shaved in five days, so, you know. But the second thing is the Silver Salmon Derby, being here for that was really cool, because Mayor Gabriel, you're right, I was here that first year, and it was actually me and Brendan Scheifli, who was with Marathon, who got that Derby started. I don't know if you remember Brendan. Great community member, member of the chamber, did just a ton of stuff when he was here. Anyway, so, it's really cool to see it in its ninth year, and that it continues to be, well, even more successful than ever this year, so pretty cool. Anyways, that's not why I'm here. I'm here actually on behalf of Rasmussen. You know, the Rasmussen Foundation looks for worthy things to fund in the state of Alaska. And this brown bear project is perfect, in my opinion. I mean, it's a community-driven project that's gonna do incredible things for the airport, and I think, like you said, Mayor Gabriel, it's gonna be the first thing that people see when they come to the, to the city of Kenai. Really excited about that. And when Christine originally reached out to me about this, I wasn't real sure that Rasmussen was going to fund it, but she told me the story of what they were trying to accomplish, and really, the, what they were trying to do for the community through this, and it was about collaboration with other entities within the city, and how this can grow into something even bigger. And I told her, I said, you know, when Rasmussen come down here and meets with you guys, I just want you to tell the story. And we did meet him over at the airport. Mayor Gabriel was there, Terry was there, Mary and Christine were there, and Christine told the story, and Mary told the story. And it was evident after that that they were gonna fund this, and I'm super, super excited that they are. And I'll just reiterate what Henry said. These two women in the back here have done amazing things. And this is the type of community project that I can really get. And this is the type of community project that I can really get behind, excuse me again, and Rasmussen can as well. So thanks to those two for everything they've done. Super proud that the Rasmussen Foundation donated.
Very good. Comments, questions for Ms. Ostrander? Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you very much, Paul. We appreciate you and the Rasmussen Foundation. The Rasmussen Foundation has done a lot in our community, a lot of different grants and whatnot, and this is just the latest that I'm aware of. It's, it's a builder.
And hopefully, a lot more to come for our community in the future, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Appreciate you taking the time to stop in and as a representative of Rasmussen Foundation. And you're appointed as a, as a board member, right?
Yes.
So is fairly within the last year or so. So I just wanted, and for those people that don't know, Paul was our city manager for a number of, I can't.
Six years.
Six years. And so his work here, just, it was nice to see you get nominated and put on the board of Rasmussen. So I think they did themselves a, you know, a good work to move that organization forward. But again, if you would pass along, certainly our, express our gratitude to them as well.
And actually, that reminds me, Mayor Gabriel, I should. That reminds me, Mayor Gabriel, I should say that another person that was pushing hard for this grant for the city was the former board member of the Rasmussen Foundation, Mike Navarre. And he talked to Rasmussen several times, and, and he told me, because I, being a new board member, I wasn't sure how hard I should push because I felt this was worthwhile. He said, you need to push, because I would. So I did. And I'm glad to see it happened.
Very good. Thanks, Paul. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Nobody online, nobody in chambers? We'll bring you back, back to chambers. Comments, deliberation? Vice Mayor Naxton.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I think that it's probably appropriate, just out of process to, for disclosure, I mean, that I'm part of the committee for the Bronze Bear and also part of the Kenai Community Foundation, which donated money and some of my own. But it's just a community thing. There's, it's a total donation. I don't get any finances out of it, but I just thought it might be appropriate in case somebody was wondering about that.
Thank you. Appreciate you disclosing that, and I'll rule that you will be able to vote on this. You seem no financial remuneration, so. Any further discussion, comments? Vice Mayor Naxton.
If I might, I think it's something that, I don't think Mary touched on this, but in, in the whole process with, of formulating what, you know, with the artist, this artist, by the way, is the one that did the, the bold moose on the National Wildlife Refuge on the top of the hill, ski hill. There's a big bold moose, bronze moose up there. He did that. He's doing this one. And he is very talented and he can, you know, he's doing this, but what, there's nuances in bears and that you and I, none of us here, might necessarily see between a Kenai brown bear and one in Kodiak or whatever. They're, they're, they're shaped differently, they're, they're now, they're snout, however. And, but they reached out for a professional biologist here on the peninsula that knows bears, and there were tweaks made so the bear, the sculpture will be a Kenai bear. I just thought I'd add that.
Wow. So a bear is not a bear. Councillor Askin.
Because Henry also was forthcoming about, I'm also on the Community Foundation, and of course, we donated some of our own money, so, but I didn't get anything from it either.
Thank you for that disclosure, Councillor Askin. I will rule that you will be able to vote on this ordinance. In fact, I think it's appropriate. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember Sonjar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessenya?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3486-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. That brings us to commission reports. First up, we have I-1 Council on Aging Commission.
Okay, that would be me. Council on Aging met on September 11th, Senior Center, and it was a work session, not a meeting, and they, it was their work plan, they were going over that and reviewing it. And I suppose the only thing that might involve the city in the discussion, their discussion generally, was they want to, they would like to be able to mail out or contact seniors in the, in the community, and they were wanting to know if there was some way that the city might be able to help them with that. And I'm not sure that we have a list of people that are considered seniors and addresses. So they are, they're, they're going to be doing some kind of searching to see how they might be able to do that. Perhaps an easier way might be through email or something like that, if they can get that. But, so they had a, had a very nice work session meeting and, and no decisions obviously were made. And their next meeting will be October 9th.
Thank you, Harbor Committee, or, I'm sorry, Airport Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Nothing new to report for Airport Commission. The last meeting was canceled, and the next meeting is October the 9th.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
Well, shoot, I took the wrong note here. We haven't had a meeting since the last one. And Harbor Commission, next regular scheduled meeting appears to be November 10th.
Very good. Parks and Recreation Commission?
I believe they have a, Alex is out, and I believe they have a work session scheduled for 6:00 tomorrow.
6:00 PM tomorrow, work session. Very good, thank you. Planning and zoning commission?
P&amp;Z met last Wednesday, and they passed Resolution PG 2025-28, which granted a conditional use permit to temporarily allow an accessory building on a parcel without a main building over in the Momson's subdivision. And this was for, for the builders to be able to secure their tools securely and safely while they are building that project. And it's temporary, so that's all, that was their primary business at the meeting.
Thank you. Beautification Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Beautification met in work session on the evening of September 9th. They reviewed their August 26 tour of the parks in town and reviewed their capital improvement plan, and their next meeting is October 14th.
Thank you. Under report of the mayor, I have just a few things here. I was able to spin the wheel last Tuesday for the first magic weight to kick off the Silver Salmon Derby, and then came in Monday and did the, the live Facebook, Facebook Live, I think, spinning of the final champ, or championship weight. So very exciting there, it was a lot of fun. Live, doing stuff live is a little bit nerve-wracking, but I think it, I think it came out fine. Last week, last Friday, actually, I also had the honor of swearing three new Kenai Police Department officers. We have Luke Michael, Tyler Greenhog, Greenhall, and Trevor Hamilton. So three new officers on, in the force, which brings us back to, as of now, police staffs. So good to see that. Seem like very fine men and some, with at least some background already in, in emergency services. And with that, that is my report. We'll go to administration report, city manager, Mr. Eubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few things to report on the staffing and recruitment front. We still are recruiting, actively recruiting for some key positions here at the city. Those include the airport manager, our building official, and a chief animal control officer. We actually did some interviews today on the airport manager, and I think the building official one is also doing some interviewing right now. So we also have some recruitment underway for utility operators for the water and sewer utility, administrative assistant at the airport, and temporary equipment operators for the winter season at the airport. The city slash site, slash disposal site is going to close, and I believe it's going to close on the 28th, but I want to confirm that with Tyler, but I know we're winding that down. He said we're averaging about two visits a day, so we're still getting some use there at the site. And once it's closed, the crew will go in, stack everything up, and they'll burn that off this fall when, when the weather permits. As far as storefront improvement program, we're still accepting applications, and they must be submitted. Applications are available on the city's website, and they must be submitted by October 17th. So that's still going. Capehead hosted a, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District hosted a regional housing roundtable. Some of our staff attended that, include some discussions with, regarding housing affordability, limited multi-human housing, growing senior population here on the Kenai Peninsula, and Capehead will be providing a report and continue to facilitate and collaborate discussions on, on housing here in the central peninsula here. Capehead's also in the middle of their SEDS work, which is a comprehensive economic development strategy. Their next session will be Tuesday, the 23rd, at 10:00 AM. It's going to be a Zoom meeting, so if you haven't participated in one of those, I would, I think that link is available on their website. I encourage everybody to try to participate in one of those. I think it's a good discussion, and they're looking for the communities that have put into formulating their next SEDS. Very, very happy and proud to report that our police department has been re-accredited. So they just got approval. They received that September 9th, Northwest Accreditation Alliance renewed the accreditation of the Kenai Police Department. Lieutenant Langham was the accreditation officer who led that process. But, you know, I'll stress, KPD is one of the few accredited police agencies in the state of Alaska. I think it's a testament to the command over there, Chief Ross, Lieutenant Langham. But I think it's also a testament to every single one of our officers. And what, really, to me, what accreditation means, and gives me comfort as your city manager, is that these agencies go through all of the policies, procedures of our police department, making sure that we're following, you know, best practices in police work and the way we do things. And not only are they looking at our policies and procedures, but they're also testing and verifying that we're actually doing what our policies and procedures say. So, you know, there's a thorough review. I do plan, we will be doing a presentation, I believe, on one of the upcoming council meetings. Representative from the accrediting agency will be presenting that to council. I just think it's, I think it needs to be said a number of times, and really proud of the department over there. Bluff stabilization project, put this on your calendar. The Corps is planning to host a public end of the project event. They're scheduling that for Wednesday, October 29th. We do not have a time as of yet, but the date there's tentatively have right now is the 29th. Today, Public Works Director Frye and myself met with Colonel Palazzini and Randy Baucher. Colonel Palazzini is the Alaska, the Army Corps of Engineers Alaska District Commander. He was down here for a site visit. And so we were there with the representatives from the contractor and the Corps. They're looking at about two and a half barges of remaining rock to bring in. That next barge, I believe they're projecting Saturday, I think, coming into the river, they'll be taking the barge today. I think they should have took the barge that's currently in the river out today, but, so only about two and a half barges left, which is pretty remarkable for where we are. And so it looks like the construction's been going well. Talked with Parks and Rec Director Best today. The 2026 Alaska Parks and Recreation Association Annual Conference is going to be hosted by the city of Kenai, be taking place here. They're, Tyler's working with Samantha in the chamber, make sure we put on a really good conference for them, likely to be sometime in September of 2026. It's a really foreign time for me, because I said, doesn't anybody in Parks and Rec hunt? Because that's a crazy time to me, but it looks like it's going to be sometime in September 2026. But really appreciate Tyler making the application for the city to host that, bring some business to town, but also bring a lot of Parks and Rec professionals here, let us show off what we have. And it's just great interaction for our staff, and thank you, Sam, for the chamber, for your assistance in helping us do that. And last thing I wanted to say, I was out, but the mayor did swear in those three officers. I also want to recognize and commend Sarah Heron, one of our officers. She reached 10 years of service with the department, not all consecutive, she took a little break, went to another agency, but came home, came home to roost, and she's been with us, been on our force for 10 years, does an excellent job, and really want to recognize her for her commitment to the community. So thank you, Sarah. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? Vice Mayor Naxton?
Thank you. I think last time you gave a report on the bluff project, we talked about getting access to it and bridging, and consultant was working on that, and also, you know, the angle of repos, and was, I was kind of curious where, where that is, or when we can expect something from the consultant on, on that. And also, if, if you believe that we have funds remaining in the budget for the bluff project that can be utilized and actually construct some of what we need to do as far as access bridging.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Naxted through the mayor. Yes, we have been working with the consultant. I talked to the engineer today, the design engineer. We have issued a change order to do the estimate on where the slope, they believe the slope will stabilize at. They think they'll have that work done probably in the next couple of weeks, and we should receive a report in the next month or so. As far as next steps, as far as looking at potential access points, it's not something we've necessarily pulled the trigger on because we're going to wait and review that report on where we think the bluff is going to stabilize and potentially, you know, timeline on how long that's going to take. Like we discussed last time, we are expecting sloughage, you know, from the bluff itself. Again, this project is not going to stop erosion immediately of our bluff, it's stabilizing the toe, which will end the erosion cycle. But erosion is going to take place, sloughage is going to happen, and we're very concerned if we provide access to, to the wall or to the top of the wall, and the sloughage is going on, that we could be putting people in. If we provide access, even if we put signage up or gates up, people are going to get around it, and they're going to be down there walking on it, and we know there's going to be sloughage happening. So we're a little concerned about that. We're going to wait and look at this report and look at what our next steps are. Obviously, when this project is complete, the Army Corps of Engineers' participation in it after the warranty period will cease. We, per our participation agreement, take over maintenance and, and ongoing operations of it. Having said that, we do have a fair amount of state funds remaining that I believe are still related to the project, and I would push for construction of access and other things associated with that to be included as project cost, because we can't maintain it without access, and I think that's just part of the total project. So we do have state grant funds remaining that we will continue to try to secure and retain, working with the state, until we get everything we think needs to be part of the project handled, so.
Thank you. You answered that very well.
Any questions of, any other questions of the city manager? Seeing none, as you noticed, our city attorney is not here this evening. He did call me yesterday and asked to be excused. His daughter's a senior this year, and that was an event that he, we had a light agenda. I, I didn't think the body would have a problem granting him that wish, but I did ask him if he would like me to deliver his report. And he said, sure. So he has nothing to report, and if he was here, he could answer any questions. So. So with that, we'll go to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Absentee voting starts Monday, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 here at City Hall and also at Kenai Peninsula Borough Building. And that's my report.
Thank you. I did have actually one question. And I know it was on the consent agenda, maybe I should have brought it up then, but there was curious that, there was, I'd have to go back to it, but just for clarification, for confirmation of the appointment of election precinct boards. Ms. Sanders, you said that we have up to, I think, four people on each board. There was one that only had three. So I was just curious if that, the next meeting, would that be someone else? Would that have to be approved? Or I was just curious about that.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Gabriel. So our code restricts election workers to city residents. However, there's two elections going on and the borough's code does not restrict them. So there are more precinct workers there than listed, but we can only confirm the residents of the city working there.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. So with that, any questions of the city clerk? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yeah, it may not be a question. It probably is kind of general discussion, but I just kind of wanted to hear the clerk's idea. You know, the borough has a couple of items in the next election that are coming up that affect the city one way or the other. And it's kind of been typically our position not to weigh in with an opinion. But I think there's a hand count and then moving the election into November, which does impact the city in some way, or there are some ramifications to that. And I was wondering if the clerk's office has thought about providing information to our voters, our local voters on, you know, a cost or it's going to be, you know, what that might do with the city. There's things with our code and whatnot that wouldn't allow it here. So we'd have to still go back to the voters, just that kind of informational that we might be able to provide to them.
Ms. Sanders?
To the mayor, there, until we know the outcome of the election, that would be, if the council wanted to take a stance, that would be a, because it's a campaigning issue, you guys could appropriate funds to campaign. But at this point, informing the voters of how it affects us, it doesn't. This borough election and depending on whether it passes or not, that will affect our voters. And after we see how it comes out in the wash and how the voters decide, then I can report to the council how it's going to affect us and our constituents and what our next moves would be.
Do you have an answer?
Sort of, it sounds like we'd be waiting until after it affects us to discuss how it affects us, you know? So.
Sorry, through the mayor. The proposition does not affect the city of Kenai. It affects the Kenai Peninsula Borough's election. It would change nothing in our elections. It's only the boroughs. However, if that passes, we would have to stand alone to do our own. And that would be ours. Our election date is in our charter. It would be a vote of our, a choice of our voters to change that. And depending on the voters' vote on the issue will be how I report to the council. But until knowing that, at this point, it doesn't change anything in our local city elections.
Probably not a good time to debate and discuss that, but it just seems like, yeah, it moved, yeah, it's a borough election, but in the city election that would have to happen in October, we would put it on and not the borough. And we wouldn't necessarily have the machines. And however, you know, I'm just not sure exactly how that would work, at least for the first year, or maybe indefinitely.
We would not have the access to the borough's machines, but if subject is brought to our council, then the council can choose to fund for machines for the city. It's going to depend, like I said, on the outcome of the election. If it's passed by our voters, I will bring my recommendations and the choices to the council at that point on how we can continue with the machines or to go to hand count.
Very good. Any other questions of the city clerk? Seeing none, with that, we will go to additional public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council at this time? Ms. Springer?
I'll be really quick. So Kenai River Marathon is going to be not this weekend, but next weekend on the 28th. We are still looking for volunteers. And so if anybody wants to, that'd be great. We've had city council members help out before, for the race. And we're having registration close on the 23rd next week, which is earlier than normal. But it gives us time to actually get everything ready and not rush it. Right now, we're at 178 participants and I expect to see between 20 and 40 more within the next week, which is always fun. So we had 63 a month ago total people registered. So, yeah, everyone likes to wait. Also, our 40th annual fundraiser is going to be October 4th. We're down to five tables left, so that's pretty exciting. And so just remember, if anyone wants to come to a speak easy, it's going to be sold out, I hope. Also, the third annual haunted chamber is coming up as well. That's going to be October 18th through the 31st. We're also looking for volunteers for that. It's a massive undertaking to decorate for that when we make the maze and we're redoing the whole maze because why wouldn't we? And we actually, today, I spoke with Matt Brown from Operation Children First. And we're going to be partnering with him to have a donation bin for toys as well as our donation bin for the food bank. Because if you don't know, it is a free event to the community, but it's nice to team up with other organizations to get donations for them. So working with him, working with the food bank, that'll be great. And then it'll already be time for, like, for Christmas comes to Kenai. And then we'll, I know. And then we're also going to do the angel tree again because last year we ended up helping about 120 families. And I have a feeling that there'll be even more need this year now that people know about it. But we were able to help all of those families last year. So, yeah, that's, that's all I got finally.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Springer?
And the volunteers.
Thank you, Samantha. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Actually, I don't have much tonight. Just everybody enjoy fall and enjoy the pretty colors. It's, September goes way too fast. Before we know it, the leaves will be down. And we got fall fundraisers coming up all around between chamber and fine arts. And it's almost tis the season. So be safe out there, all you hunters.
Thank you. Counselor Raskin?
Thank you. I don't have a lot either to thank you to Katja for all the good work you do. And congratulations to KPD on their reaccreditation and also to the winners of the Silver Salmon Derby. And make sure you get a moose, not something else.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Counselor Askin took everything I was going to say, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Enjoy this lovely weather we're having, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you. Counselor Kessena?
I also don't have that much to say, other than I had, I stumbled into election prep at the Borough Admin Building here this past week, where they, they being clerks from the borough and election workers and our clerk prepping for the elections. And I had heard Deborah's comments in the past about, you know, the efforts that go into it. And even just the efforts that look, that they were going through just to set it up seemed like a really rigorous process. And so I appreciate everyone who's involved in that, making that happen. It appears to be a lot of work. So thankful someone else is doing that.
Yeah. And thanks for the volunteers that do step up and do that work. It's nice to see the community involved with that. Vice Mayor Naxted?
I too don't have a whole lot, so we'll just celebrate the equinox that's coming up in a few days. And if we ever get a clearer night, it's dark now earlier, I can get my telescope out before it gets cold. But that's all I have.
Thank you. This evening, we have no executive session nor pending items, seeing no other business for this body. We are adjourned. I'd like to have you, we're going to immediately go into Board of Adjustment here, so we want I'd like to call the Board of Adjustment, September 17th, 2025, Board of Adjustment meeting to order. And we'll note that it's 6:57 PM. First up, we'll have roll call of our members.
Chair Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Kessena?
Here.
Councilmember Dot, I'm sorry, board member. Board Member Askin?
Here.
Board Member Naxted?
I'm here.
Board Member Daniel?
Here.
And Board Member Sonar?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up, we have item C, Approval of Minutes, July 2nd, 2025, Cornerstone Developments of Alaska LLC Appeal. Pleasure, counsel. Board Member Naxted?
Thank you, President Gabriel, I think. I move for approval of the July 2nd, 2025 minutes and request unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to the approval of the July 2nd, 2025 Cornerstone Developments of Alaska LLC Appeal? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, that closes public comments. And unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion is approved and seeing no other business for this Board of Adjustment.